Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everyone. Before we commence, I wish to make the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of the Royal Commission, I wish to acknowledge the Dara people who are the traditional custodians of the land upon which this hearing is taking place. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people who are attending the hearing in person today or who are following the proceedings on the live stream. Yes, Mrs. Eastman?
Good morning, Commissioners and good morning, everyone following the Royal Commission proceedings, both in the room and also online. Commissioners, just before we start with our first witness, I'll outline what will happen today. So today, we will first hear from Nicola Morehouse. Nicola prefers to be referred to as Nick, we'll do that. And following Ms. Morehouse's evidence, you'll then have a pre-record from Christmas. We met Christmas as part of the team at the Neighbourhood Centre in Newtown in Sydney. And Christmas pre-recorded a discussion with me a few months ago and we'll play his pre-recording. We'll then break for morning tea, which should be around 11:15. And then after morning tea, we'll have a panel of specialist homeless services representatives. There'll be three members of the panel and Mr. Fogarty will take their evidence. We'll then adjourn for lunch and then following lunch, our witness will be Claudia. She comes from a regional part of New South Wales. She's a young person and she'll talk about her experiences. And we'll end the day with a final pre-record that we also did as part of the Newtown Neighbourhood Centre with William. So that's the proposal for the day. And Commissioners, if there's any changes to those arrangements, I'll let you know. So you'll see Ms. Morehouse is with us in the hearing room now and she will take an affirmation.
Ms. Morehouse, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission today. Thank you also for the statement that you've provided, which we have all read. I just interrupt myself that Commissioner Galblin doesn't appear to be able to...
She is. So we've just turned off some of the screens just to keep the lighting a little bit lower, but yes, she's...
Well then, let me explain if I may where everybody is. Commissioner Galblin, who usually is on screen but is not at the moment, is located in Melbourne and is participating in the hearing remotely. Commissioner Ryan is on my left and I'm the Chair of the Royal Commission. So thank you very much for your statement, coming to give evidence today. If at any time you need to take a break, just let us know and that's to be organised quite readily. And I'll now ask Ms. Eastman, oh, first of all, we'll ask if you would follow the instructions of my associate who's located over there. He will administer the affirmation to you. Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation at the end. Please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morehouse. Now I'll ask Ms. Eastman to ask you some questions.
Thank you. So can I confirm that your name is Nicola Morehouse?
Yes.
And your preference is to be referred to as Nick?
Yes, please.
And what would you like me to call you today, Ms. Morehouse or Nick?
Nick, please.
Nick, you've prepared a statement which is dated the 28th of July this year. And can you confirm that the contents of the statement are true?
Yes, I can.
So I want to ask you some questions arising from your statement. But do you come to the Royal Commission because you want to talk about how, in your view, a shortage of appropriate rental properties, the increasing cost of rent and systemic issues with the public housing system in New South Wales have created a crisis situation for you and your daughters? And so you want to share your story so people are aware of the shortage of accessible housing for people with disability who have children? And that the public housing system can be difficult to navigate for people with disability?
Yes, that's correct.
So can I start by asking about yourself and your family? So you live in Newcastle?
Yes, I do.
And you're 45 years old now?
Yes.
And you have two daughters?
Yes.
One's 15 and one's 18.
Yes.
And we're hoping one of the daughters might be here soon.
She might be.
And one of the younger daughter, she's still at school, she's in year nine at school.
Yes.
And she lives with you, but she also spends some of the time with her father, is that right?
That's correct.
And your older daughter is living in Sydney now.
She is now, yes.
Both your daughters live with disability?
Yes, they're both autistic. Sorry, they're both autistic.
And your eldest daughter is not an NDIS participant?
No.
But you're working through a process at the moment for your younger daughter to become an NDIS participant?
Yes.
And you're also an NDIS participant?
That is correct.
I just want to ask you about your daughter and living with autism and what the importance of her physical environment means to her. Does she struggle with noise?
Yeah, she has a lot of issues with noise. It's a sensitivity that she definitely has, yeah.
And she struggles with disruptions to her usual routine?
Yep.
And stress and uncertainty, particularly around housing in recent times, has caused her a lot of anxiety, is that right?
Yeah, Mel has a lot of anxiety and she also has quite explosive meltdowns.
And so where you live and the form of the housing that you live in is important in terms of assisting her and managing her anxiety and living with autism, is that right?
That is correct.
She's had to miss a fair amount of school this year as you've navigated your way through the public housing system, is that right?
Yes, yep.
Can I ask you about you? You, last year, completed a Bachelor of Arts at the University of Newcastle?
Yes.
And you received an award. What was that award for?
I received the Perseverance Award.
A Perseverance Award. So what does that involve to receive the Perseverance Award?
That was for sort of basically completing a degree whilst living with a disability and having other issues such as being a single parent of children with additional needs. And also I work at the university with autistic students too.
So for you, education is a very important thing, isn't it?
It's incredibly important, yes.
And when you studied for your Bachelor of Arts, you majored in English Creative Writing and Global Indigenous Studies?
That's correct.
And your intentions are to undertake an honours degree?
Yes.
And you'd also like to be able to work to completing a PhD, is that right?
That's my plan, yes.
So I think you just mentioned this, but you do also work at the university as well?
I do, part-time.
And that's as a specialist peer mentor for autistic students?
Yes.
What does that work involve?
That involves basically sharing the skills that I have developed over my own time at university and sharing those with the students and helping them with pretty much every aspect of student life. I'm not a tutor, so I don't actually help them with their assignments, but I help them plan their assignments and plan how they're going to get things in on time. And I help them access other supports at the university. And I'm just sort of a support person, really.
And so this means that you work with quite a lot of students and they might have a really interesting and rich range of experiences, life experiences themselves, is that right?
That's true, yeah.
And part of supporting people as a peer mentor might be also supporting them if they're gender diverse people who live with disability?
Yes, yeah. Last year, I was a group leader for a group for women's and gender diverse, yeah.
Now, do you mind if I ask you some questions about your disability? Because this is going to be a topic that we will talk about shortly in terms of finding accessible housing. So you've told the Royal Commission that you have visual snow syndrome?
That's correct.
And you've set out in some detail in the statement the nature of that disability. But could you tell the Royal Commissioners about the nature of that syndrome? And what it means in terms of your life? And then I will ask you some questions that will take us into housing and the arrangements in your physical space to accommodate your disability. So let's start with the nature of the syndrome.
Okay, visual snow syndrome is a neurological disorder that is relatively rare and currently there's quite a lot of research happening because not a lot, until recently, was known about visual snow syndrome. For me, I have vision, but I do not have any clarity of vision. So I see what looks like static pixels that is constantly moving across my entire visual field. And it has, because it's quite thick, so it has depth to it. It impacts, it also impacts my spatial awareness and my depth perception. It has made reading incredibly difficult. I'm not able to drive anymore. And I'm extremely photosensitive, which is why I wear sunglasses and hats and need lights dimmed everywhere that I go.
So the vision issue started for you in around 2013?
Yes, that's correct.
And I think you've said you're legally blind, you used that expression, and that since 2020. Was there a process you had to go through to have that description legally blind?
Yeah, there was a process. And unfortunately, even though my ophthalmologist would consider me, had considered me legally blind before 2020, because of the criteria around low vision that doesn't really fit with visual snow syndrome, I had to wait until my vision had decreased quite considerably until I met that criteria.
And over that period of time, you've had to make adjustments to the way you live, is that right?
Yes, I did.
And over time, adjustments also to particularly your housing and your living environment. So the way the house is set up and organised and where it might be located, for example, getting to university or for your daughters to be able to get to school, is that right?
Yes, yeah, impacted like every aspect of my life.
Okay. So in terms of the accessibility requirements for you now in the spaces you live in, you need enough space to navigate through and between rooms?
Yes.
And do you use your cane at home, is that right?
Not so much at home, not now that I'm sort of settled in my new house. I did it first. But once I'm familiar, very familiar with the space, I don't really, if there's no hazards in that space, I don't tend to use it.
So having space where you can just have that certainty?
Yep.
About moving around without there being any sort of risks, I think, as you've described, bumping into doors or frames or things like that?
Yes, yep.
One aspect of the accessibility requirements is also window coverings to reduce the amount of natural light?
Yes, that's correct.
And in terms of the lighting in the house, just having that right degree of lighting in particular spaces? For example, it might be different in bedrooms or lounge rooms compared to the kitchen or the laundry, is that right?
That is correct. I'm sorry, is it okay if I just add that, so visual snow doesn't just, syndrome, sorry, doesn't just affect my vision? So I have other symptoms such as vertigo, migraine, nausea. I often struggle with the left-hand side of my body. I get sort of a temporary paralysis, weakness and pain in the left side of my body.
So the lighting is really around those neurological symptoms that might be a trigger for migraines, is that right?
Yes, and the vertigo, yes.
So bright or fluorescent, bright and light fittings make it very difficult to see?
That is correct.
So in the hearing room, this, we've dimmed the lights in the hearing room here at the Royal Commission, but there's still quite strong lights, aren't they?
Yes, yep.
So if at any stage you have a break or the lighting's not working, let us know.
Thank you.
The other aspect in terms of just that spatial issues is you've said about the need for handrails on steps and stairs. And is that just to create that degree of certainty to be able to navigate around spaces?
Yes, sometimes with my vertigo, though, I do struggle with my balance. And if my left-hand side of my body isn't communicating with me correctly, I may struggle more to get up and down steps.
And in terms of what do you need within your own home? What's changed for you over the past sort of 12 years or so?
What's changed? Okay, I guess just needing more space so that I can navigate areas better. Things need to be in their place, otherwise I can't find them. So everything has to have a home and be put back in that home. What else? Obviously, the lighting that we've spoken about, a quiet place. Yeah, and just sort of easy access as well, location.
Yeah. All right. So can I ask you some questions now about your experience in the Newcastle rental market?
Yes, you can.
So until June this year, your daughters and you lived in a rented house in Newcastle?
Yes, we did.
And you lived in that same house from about 2016, is that right?
That's correct.
And why did you have that sense that that rental house never felt like a home? Feel unsafe there, but what was it about that sense of not feeling like a home?
I think it had a lot to do with the fact that it didn't meet my requirements for my disability and that particularly the bathroom was quite dangerous for me. And there was a couple of other areas at the house that I struggled with that I would walk into pretty often.
Is it an old house?
It was a very old house and it had a lot of, there was a lot of issues with things like mould and which impacted my access to things.
The set of furnishings and fittings in the house were a bit worn and dirty?
Yes, yep.
And the bathroom was an issue, was an old bathroom? It was a little rusty?
It was extremely rusty, yes.
And you had to stand on a wooden board to be able to use the shower?
Yes.
And so over time, you had a number of occasions where you tripped using the bathroom, is that right?
Yes.
Even things such as the drawers in the bathroom were unstable?
Yes.
And not being able to get rid of the moulds?
Yep.
And some water leaking and the leak scottles, is that right?
Quite an issue with water leaking, yes.
Did you think that it was dangerous to live in that house?
I felt like the bathroom was, yes.
And in terms of that feeling it's dangerous in the bathroom, did you do anything about that? Did you talk to the landlord?
Yes, I did, many times. And that is how I ended up being evicted.
All right. So in January this year, the managing agent advised you that you would be issued with an eviction notice. And the purpose of the eviction notice was so that repairs could be undertaken in the house?
Yes.
So were these repairs of the repairs that you identified?
Yes.
To be done? And was that principally around the bathroom?
Principally, yes.
Dealing with the mould and perhaps some new furnishings or like new carpets and things like that?
Yes.
And was it your understanding that once those repairs had been done, that you might be able to return to the house?
I was told that I could if I wanted to, however, that the rent was going to go up by about $200 a week. And that property has just hit the market. It's not, it's not gone up by quite 200, but it's now on the market at $590.
And that's out of your price range?
Completely, I was struggling to pay $420.
So just pausing at January this year, you're told that the house needed to be repaired. You would have to leave?
Yes.
And if you wanted to come back, it was probably going to cost more to come back?
Yes.
So at that point in time, in January, you were facing a situation where you couldn't have paid the proposed new rent, but you still needed somewhere to live, even if the house was being repaired, is that right?
That's correct.
And in January, your principal source of income was a disability support pension?
That's correct.
Together with other government supplements around family tax benefits, is that right?
That's correct.
Do you mind me saying what your income was at that time?
No, not at all.
So you were receiving about $800 a week?
Correct.
And in terms of paying the rent, which at that time was $420 a week, the idea of the rent possibly going up to something over 600, even as high as $670 a week would have been well out of your budget?
Correct.
So faced with that dilemma, is it the case that you started to look for another house to rent in Newcastle?
That is true, yes.
And in terms of Newcastle as a location, were there particular reasons why you focused on Newcastle?
Well, my daughter's father lives in Newcastle and he has 14% custody, so I needed to stay close to him. And my studies at the University of Newcastle would be very difficult. I also have my supports in Newcastle. Vision Australia is based in Hamilton and all my support workers are based in Newcastle.
So Newcastle's sort of critical to making sure that your life works for your work, study and your daughter's study? And I assume you've got friends and...
Yes, I do. I do have connections in Newcastle. But it's also going to new places when you can't see very well and learning to navigate those places can be very, very difficult.
So I want to ask you about finding a property that you might want to rent. So I think these days, everybody just jumps onto the internet, they do a little search?
Yes.
And I might then go and inspect a property, queue up with everybody at the same time on a Saturday morning? What's the process you use to first of all identify properties and what were you doing earlier this year?
I did something very similar to that. My first port of call was to go on the internet and try and look at properties and to have my support workers help me look for properties. Yeah, that was one of the ways. It's very difficult because I can't really see accurately what things look like when presented on the screen.
So going on screen and doing an online search, that itself's got some difficulties just because of the way in which you use the screen?
Yes.
In doing those searches, was there any capacity to identify what you actually needed from an accessibility requirement?
It's very, very difficult just from there. Just from the ads that are on places like realestate.com. It's very, very difficult, yes.
Did it mean that you'd actually have to physically go to a property to identify whether the property, both externally and internally, were going to meet your access requirements?
Yes.
Okay. So you've just mentioned your support coordinator. Did you have assistance to actually do these searches?
I did, yes.
And what was the nature of that assistance? Because you're able to get on and put in the information.
Yes.
But what was the support coordinator doing that was different?
So my support coordinator was helping me. She was looking at other avenues other than just the usual going online. She was looking into different agencies like Compass and other social housing organisations. And she was also looking into things like respite and crisis disability housing. And that's when we discovered that it would be quite, I wouldn't say easy, but it would be a much simpler process to go down that path if I didn't have children. But there was very little in the way of options for emergency or respite for a disabled person with children.
So your initial starting point was just to take a regular path of looking online or what was available for standard rental properties?
Yes.
And your support coordinator was starting to look at something outside, say, the private rental market in terms of different options?
Yes, she also, she also started making contact with actual real estate agents too. Because when I had spoken to them myself, they weren't really too interested in helping me.
Okay, so you quickly realised that the Newcastle private rental market had changed quite a bit since you rented your house?
Prices had gone up significantly too.
So you're looking, you're looking for a three-bedroom house for you and your daughters?
Yes.
That would have all of the accessibility features for the family, is that right?
That's correct.
And as you started to look at what you needed, not even necessarily what you actually would like, but what you needed to do day-to-day activities, there just wasn't anything that was meeting that was there, okay? So what happened along the way? So I'm going to ask you about some of the properties that you've shared. But did you have to make a decision about the expectations of what accommodation might be available?
Yes, I did. I realised that if I was going to stay in the private rental market, that I would be in a position again where I would have to live somewhere that wasn't actually suitable for me and my disability.
And in terms of keeping the family together, did it have some consequences for your elder daughter and what she decided to do?
Yes, I think my, I don't really like talking on her behalf, but she explained to me that she, she felt that it would be easier for me if I was just looking for a two-bedroom apartment because she, sorry, a two-bedroom place, because she had been thinking about moving to Sydney anyway. She had not intended to move when she did. But she decided that that would make things easier, easier for me.
You, as the date got closer to when you'd have to leave your former property, the anxiety started to kick in, is that right?
Very much so, yes.
And you started to think about looking not just for a place to live, but crisis accommodation?
Yes.
Right. And what can you tell the Royal Commission about that process of starting to think about crisis accommodation? What did that mean for you and your younger daughter?
It was extremely stressful, extremely stressful, not knowing what's going to happen or where you're going to end up. It causes a lot of anxiety and obviously anxiety exacerbates my, my condition. And for my younger daughter, Millicent, she, she really struggled. She struggled with the house being boxed up and she struggled with not knowing what was going to happen, which caused her, she was having several meltdowns a day and she wasn't sleeping very well. And she was extremely unhappy.
Were you told or was your understanding that crisis accommodation would have involved a bedroom in a share house with support workers?
That's what I was told to expect. And what would have had to have happened? My youngest daughter would have had to have gone and lived with her dad, which was not a situation that myself or my daughter really would have, would have liked.
And at this time, you're still working at the university?
I wasn't, no. My, I only work very part-time and I need to be a student in order to, to do that position. However, I was unable to remain at university. I was unable to do honours this year because of the stress of being evicted and trying to find somewhere to live and the impact that was having, not only on myself but my children. I am now back to doing that job as the university has, has made an allowance for me to do that as they know that I will be undertaking honours next semester.
So I want to turn to the topic of public housing. And you first applied for public housing in 2016. And you understood that you were on a housing register or the list from about September 2016, is that right?
No, it was earlier, it was earlier than that. By the time... No, it was earlier, it was earlier than that. By the time they found me something, I'd been on the list for almost six and a half years.
Almost, okay. Make that notation, Commissioners, paragraph thirty-nine. So your understanding was that when you were first placed on the waiting list, you um, had a notation, this is your understanding, that your requirements were zero steps or stairs, is that right?
I didn't know at first that that's what had been put down.
Yep. But you, you learnt about that?
Yes, I did, yeah.
And so was it your understanding that if there was a notation on the application you'd made to be on the list for uh, for ha- public housing or social housing? Is if it described your particular requirements, was it your understanding that that might have a bearing on when particular accommodation might come up or be available to you?
Yes.
Is that your understanding?
Yes.
And in terms of zero steps or no stairs, you can handle stairs, I think you've said that earlier, provided that they're safe?
Yes.
And there's not too many?
Yes.
And that you've got the right contrast to be able to, to use the stairs?
Yes.
Now, um, in October twenty twenty-one, and so this is, we're jumping around on dates, but this is before your landlord gave you the notice to evict
Yes.
in January, in October twenty twenty-one, um, you were offered a public housing property.
That is correct.
And you declined that property after inspecting the house because you considered it to be unsafe for you.
That's correct.
So can I ask you just about that time, uh, around October twenty-one? When you received the, the uh, information that there was a public housing property for you, was there any consultation with you around what the housing might be? Or did you have any choice in terms of what the options might be?
No.
And in terms of the house that you inspected being unsafe, what was it about the house from your perspective that made it unsafe?
Uh, again, it was mainly focused around uh, the bathroom. This was a, a very, very small house. Uh, it had a very small, narrow corridor running down the middle of it. Uh, but the bathroom itself was very, very small. And the, uh, from what I can remember, the shower didn't have a cubicle. It had a very weird sort of uh, shower tray that was pretty much the same colour as the tiles and I, I really couldn't see it. And there was going to be a, a sort of a water issue there. But also I was fairly sure that I was going to fall over the, over the shower tray.
And i- in terms of the location of the house, was it close to schools or university or?
No, and it was a considerable walk uh, to a bus stop or any, anywhere that I would be able to buy any groceries.
And you made a decision to uh, refuse to take up that offer, is that right?
I did, um, after a, a, a good consultation with one of my support workers. Yeah, the kitchen was also uh, quite unsuitable, yes.
And at that stage, though, you still had the other house that you're in, the private rental?
Yes.
So you were not in a situation at that point in time where you had to take an offer because there might be nothing else or
Yes.
crisis accommodation?
Yes.
So did you tell the department why you wouldn't accept that particular property?
Uh, yes, they asked me to send them um, an email listing, all the reasons why it was not suitable for my disability.
And so you set up, and the Commissioners have got a copy of that email in their material. You received a response from the department in November twenty twenty-one. And the department advised you that your rejection of the property would be treated as a rejection of a reasonable offer.
That is correct.
What was your understanding of what a reasonable offer meant?
Um, from my understanding of a reasonable offer would be an offer that is suitable for my disability.
So again, having received that letter in November twenty twenty-one, your understanding was that in order to prove to the department that the house was unsuitable because of your disability, you would need to provide an occupational therapist's report?
That is correct.
Setting out that it was unsuitable?
Yes.
So for you, is, uh, do you have a regular OT or occupational therapist that you use or see?
I do now, but I believe that at that time I was still on the waiting list. Uh, the, the waiting lists uh, for, to see an OT are extremely long.
And had you ever had to get an OT report about what was suitable or unsuitable accommodation for you?
I'm sorry, I can't remember.
And the, the process of having to get an OT to explain and prepare a report about, about it being unsuitable was pretty stressful for you?
That would have been pretty stressful. I mean, it, they give you so little notice of when you, when they have a property for you to go and see. They sort of call you up and say, hey, you've got, you know, forty-eight hours or whatever it is to come in and get the keys and go and see this property. You do not have time to organise for an OT to come and see that for you. Um, not only, there is an expense to getting an OT and there's an expense to getting the OT to write that report also, which would have to come out of my um, NDIS.
Did the department um, say to you, look, we've got uh, a number of OTs here. When you're ready to go and inspect the property, let us know. And the department OT will come with you. Did anyone?
No, they didn't.
Make that suggestion to you?
I was unaware that, that the Department of Housing even had OTs uh, until about two weeks ago.
Until two weeks?
Yes.
Now, your worry was that if you rejected the uh, reasonable offer, that that might have a consequence for you in terms of any future
Yeah.
housing offers, is that right?
Yes.
And it was your understanding from the department that their policy was to make two reasonable offers to an applicant? And that concerned you a lot, didn't it?
It did, because it made me sort of, real, the realisation was that whatever they offered me, I was in such a desperate place that whatever they offered me, I was going to have to take, whether it was suitable for me or not.
At any stage between receiving the letter in November twenty twenty-one and up to when you were starting to, to look again for housing, did you have any ongoing discussions with the department about what your particular accessibility requirements might be?
I had had discussions with them because I had to, um, there was a bit of a complication over changing what had been written on my account in regards to zero steps. So yes, I, I did have a couple of conversations with them because when they sent me, when they offered me the house that they offered me in the October of twenty-one, that had no steps in it. So that's when I discovered they still had, despite um, handing in further documentation uh, to say that um, I could manage some steps. Uh, I realised that they hadn't actually changed that on my file.
Okay, so I want to move to the second house that you inspected. So we're into uh, the beginning of this year.
Yes.
And the clock is ticking in terms of moving out of
Yes.
old house. And you understood that a suitable public housing property would become available in around April twenty twenty-two?
But that's what they said originally, yes.
Getting pushed back?
Yes.
And the house became available around early May, but there was a delay before you could inspect the property, is that right?
Yes.
And you found that situation quite stressful?
Yes, that was quite stressful. They called me up and told me, uh, again, you have X amount of time to come and see this property and come and get the keys. Um, and obviously I was quite excited because um, I'd been, I'd been waiting for that call. Uh, and then I went in, into the office and sat in the office and we're, and no one had the keys. The keys were not actually there and the property wasn't ready to be viewed.
But you did eventually get to see the house?
Uh, three weeks later, yes.
And uh, when um, you inspected the house, what was your impression in terms of both the external part of the house but internally in meeting the accessibility requirements and also what your daughter needed?
Uh, uh, pretty good, actually. I was very pleasantly surprised that it was a very, very different to the original property that they had shown us. This one was close to my daughter's school. It's very close to bus stops. It's very close to grocery stores. Uh, the property itself had um, already had things like handrails in the bathrooms and uh, the, there's handrails going up both sides of the stairs, which is really important. It's uh, it's set out in a way that it's quite, the corridors and things are quite spacious. Yes.
So you accepted the offer?
I most definitely accepted the offer, yes.
And um, and you've moved i- in?
Yes.
And since you've moved in, there's a few things that you feel need to be done to modify
Yes, yeah.
the internal part of the house to make it accessible.
Yes.
What's been the process in terms of getting some modifications made internally?
Um,
Well, just as a reminder, curtains, blinds, light fittings?
Uh, yeah, well, when I, obviously, like, there's no, uh, when you move into a housing uh, association house, there is no, uh, there's no curtains, there's no blinds. So that was the first thing that I, that I had to, I had to do. Uh, I've, I have been speaking to the Department of Housing in regards to making some changes to the lights. Uh, there's three rooms, the bathroom, the laundry and the kitchen, where I cannot use the lights in those rooms because they're big, bright, sort of, there's long fluorescent lighting. Um, and also the house is painted uh, just off-white, the entire house. And because of my visual snow syndrome, I find that incredibly glaring. And I've been discussing with them, things, uh, painting and putting up wallpaper and, and that, that kind of a thing. At first, when I, when I originally spoke to them, uh, th- there was a little bit of hostility and I was told, well, you're going to have to get an OT report. Everything you want to change, you need an OT report for. And you have to then fill in, I was handed a form to fill in, which obviously I can't, uh, I can't read. Um, and they also told me that day too. They gave me another form, listing that they were going to come and do an inspection. And they handed me a whole heap of paperwork that I'm, I don't have the capacity to be able to read.
Nick, um, I think you've uh, said that some of the face-to-face and interactions with the department have been challenging.
Some of them.
Some people have been lovely.
Yes.
Others have been rude and offhand.
Yes.
And you, you say this, that the, you understand that the staff must have to deal with some difficult people, but they shouldn't speak to clients disrespectfully.
No, they shouldn't.
You've had that sense, haven't you, going in of, um, well, like, you put it in your own words, and I think you, you've told me this, about how did you feel sort of having to go in? And that sense that you should just accept what's on offer, because that's about all we're going to get.
Yeah.
Had that real sort of
Yeah, I think, and there's also a sense of, um, I guess there's a loss of agency or, or authority over my, my own disability and that I need a, an OT to explain to them, someone who isn't inside my body, he doesn't know what I'm dealing with on a, on a daily basis, to explain to them uh, what my needs are. Um, but also there's a, I don't really know the best way to say this, I'm sorry, um, I felt a lot when I have been into the Department of Housing that I, so you're sort of treated a little bit like you're a criminal, like you have done something wrong. Um, and that perhaps you don't deserve to be treated um, with respect. I don't know, it's not, it's just not a very nice, it's just not a very nice feeling.
Let me put it this way, that the experience of being a private renter and engaging with real estate agents in the private rental market has been very different for you to engaging with uh,
Yes.
government department system, both in terms of how you interact with the system?
Yes.
But also the way in which you feel you're treated in that system?
Yes.
And so you've been able to draw on sort of comparing different experiences?
Yes.
You've also been having that sense of saying, being where you are now, is that real anxiety that you could just fall off the cliff into poverty? And I think that's something you've said really worries you.
I think, I think there is a poverty trap around being on Centrelink and, and particularly being in, in a house provided by the Department of Housing. Um, and a concern for me is that I won't be able to get myself out of it.
So secure housing's essential to be able to
Yes, it is.
complete your education?
Yes.
To be able to work?
Yes.
To support your daughter?
Yes.
To be in the community?
Yes.
To have the privacy, to be able to do what you want, fulfil your own sort of personal desires and your relationships?
Yes.
And that fear of insecure housing, stripping all that back from you and the fear of poverty is something that still is with you, notwithstanding you're very happy with being in the house that you're in now, is that right?
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be correct, yeah.
And there's a slight tension in that for you, isn't there? Is that?
I, yeah, I thi- yes, yeah, yeah, there is.
The last thing I want to ask you about is some recommendations that you've proposed in your statement
Okay.
to the Commissioners. And um, and I know you're very keen to talk to them about some ideas for change. And one of them is about communication.
Yep.
And uh, the engagement with clients who need to use the department to be able to navigate their way through housing systems. So it's got to be accessible. But you also think that there could be a liaison person in each office who's got the capacity, expertise and training to assist people with disability? Um, what would you like to sort of see in terms of the way in which the department engages with people with disability?
Uh, I think in a more thoughtful manner. Uh, in a, in a manner that uh, takes into account people's disabilities and their differing needs.
You'd like to see better linkages between the NDIS and
Yes.
social housing, to help people who need social housing to find suitable housing more quickly?
Yes, definitely.
And part of your experience has been you've had very good support with your support workers and coordinators.
I do, I do now. I've had some trouble in the past, but right now I do, I do have an ex- an excellent team behind me.
And bringing those two systems together is something you think could be improved?
Definitely.
Uh, it needs to be easier and quicker for people with disability who live in social housing to make the necessary adjustments and renovations to ensure that their dwellings are safe and accessible?
Yes.
What you'd like to see is that the department should work with the client and listen to them. Uh, and it's not always realistic to have to get an OT report?
It's not realistic. I was just really lucky at, at the stage that I'm at, but I already had, I was already on the waiting list and I'd seen um, an OT had come out to me before I moved. And then I just happened to be booked in uh, with an OT at the end of July. So uh, we were, we were supposed to be working on something completely different, but she was able to come out and fill in the report that uh, the Department of Housing had, had asked for me to fill in.
Another um, recommendation that you have is that people with disability on the social housing waiting list should be able to turn down an offer for a social housing property that doesn't meet their accessibility requirements without that risk of sort of being marked as rejecting a reasonable offer? And then finding that they start to fall down the waiting list? So that's an issue you wanted to raise?
Definitely, definitely.
Um, and I think there's a, a, a range of other issues, but I'm looking at the time and I'm sure that the Commissioners have read your recommendations. But I'm also pretty sure that they'll have some questions for you as well. Um, but Nick, thank you for sharing the experiences that you've had, which um, I know when you've worked with us at the Royal Commission have been uh, occurring as we've been talking to you and evolving over the time that we've engaged with you. So thank you for working with us.
You're welcome. Thank you for giving me your voice today. Commissioners.
Thank you very much. If it's okay with you, I'll first ask Commissioner Ryan if he has any questions for you.
Oh, I don't. Um, I think it's a simple enough story that you've told very well. Thank you for coming to the Royal Commission.
I'll ask Commissioner Galbly, who, as I indicated, is in Melbourne, if she has any questions.
Um, thank you very much um, for your evidence today. I'd just like to ask you about your very last recommendation, where you say the government should do more to help people with disability to buy their own homes. And you reflect on that. Have you, uh, you know, have you got anything to add to that? And could you e- explain it? Thanks.
Yeah, look, I think I'm, I'm very grateful to the NDIS. Um, I have a good package and I Yeah, look, I think I'm I'm very grateful to the NDIS. Um I have a good package and I um I I need, I need the supports that I have and I'm very grateful for them. However, I feel like, or I believe that if the NDIS and and the government sort of were able to help support more disabled people to purchase their own housing. Uh there's a lot of supports that I need around housing that I think, sorry, what I'm trying to say in a roundabout way is that I think I would have less, less of a financial need ongoing on a yearly basis if I had access to my own home that I could set up exactly how I need it, sort of from the get-go, or to be able to move into a property and and make um, you know, sort of dramatic changes. Uh I think that would actually, over time, would save the NDIS money. And it would remove the sort of rea- reliability of the disabled people going through uh the depart- the Department of Housing in in the current uh way that that w- we are processed.
Thank you.
Uh Ms Morehouse, I noticed from your statement uh that the letter from the department indicating that they considered that you had rejected a reasonable offer was sent to you in November.
Yes.
Twenty-one. You then say in your statement that you understood that a suitable public housing property might become available around April two thousand and twenty-two. When did you get that understanding? How long after November two thousand and twenty-one?
Um that was after I had been issued my eviction notice. So once I'd been given the eviction notice, uh even though I was already told that I was at the top of the uh the high priority list, uh the Department of Housing asked me to fill in another form and to provide them with evidence that I was being evicted. It was some point, it was at some point after I had done, I had completed that. I I'm not entirely sure. I think it may have been early March.
Right.
But I'm sorry, I I can't, I I, one of my symptoms is that my memory does not work as well as it used to, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that that's okay. I just wanted to uh be a little clearer about.
Yeah, they um, they had told, they had informed me that um I think my o- original eviction date was the eighteenth of April. And they had informed me that they should have a, they should have something for me around that time. But uh because of how, a sort of a lack of communication with, between the the maintenance department and the allocation teams, they were not completely sure when the property was going to come out of maintenance.
I understand. Uh with your university studies, presumably you incur as the result of your bachelor's degree, which you now have a hex liability.
Yes, I do, I do, yes.
Is that something that has troubled you, or is that something you will worry about in due course if and when you get uh?
Um occasionally it worries me. It's one of those things where for me, my education is incredibly important uh for for numerous reasons, but.
You don't have to give reasons for that.
No, but um it's an, it's a nece- unfortunately, the hex debt is a necessary evil.
Yeah.
Um and because of my anxiety around it, I've pretty much ignored my hex, my hex debt, but obviously uh in the future, that is something that that is going to impact um on uh my ability to support myself and pay my bills and.
Sure.
Buy a house, that kind of a thing.
Um you say you would like, and you'll be starting your honours degree in the next semester. Is that this year or?
Uh no, that will be February next year.
February next year, and then you would like to do a PhD?
If I do well enough in honours, yes.
Would you mind indicating what area you would study or what, or you might do a thesis in your PhD?
Uh until quite recently, I was really, and I still am, really interested in deficit discourse and how that impacts upon um our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples in Australia. Um but sort of more recently, I'm becoming more interested in in disability advocacy. So I'm not too sure at this point uh in what direction I will go in, but probably gonna be one of those two areas.
That's entirely reasonable. I'm just interested in whether you had a specific project.
Yes.
And you contemplated an academic career in due course. Is that something?
Yes, definitely.
In in that area, perhaps of disability? All right, well, I, from my point of view, and I'm sure from the other commissioners, uh I, we wish you every success.
Thank you.
Studies and in your uh future, hopefully, academic career.
Thank you so much.
And I would like to echo what uh Ms Eastman has said and the other commissioners have said, to thank you very much for explaining your experiences and the experiences of your family as well. And the fundamental importance of having safe, accessible, secure accommodation so much depends upon it.
Thank you for um for giving me the opportunity to come here today and to to speak to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um so that concludes Ms Morehouse's evidence. And um Nick, you're very welcome to stay there if you'd like. But just before break for morning tea, um I want to play the pre-record evidence we made with Christmas. Christmas lost his job following workplace injury, and eventually he became homeless. You'll hear Christmas's experiences of rough sleeping in the streets of Sydney. And what happened to him when he moved into public housing during the COVID lockdowns. And uh he's got a bit to say, including to the Prime Minister about the importance and the benefits of social housing. So I think we can play his.
Did he identify which Prime Minister? Did you say the Prime Minister? Just wondering if he identified which one. Okay, now this isn't going to create a problem of light, is it, from this morning?
Um Nick, you're very welcome to stay or to go, whatever suits you.
Do I just move in?
Yeah, wh- wherever is comfortable for you.
Thank you.
Uh good morning, we're with Christmas.
Good morning.
Which is a pretty cool name, I think.
Yeah, you can thank the Cook Islanders for that. They come up with really good names.
So Christmas, thanks for talking to the Royal Commission this morning.
You're welcome.
And I was very keen to sort of hear your story. What can you tell us about your life? How far back do you wanna go?
Um, well, I can go um all the way. Um basically, I've been one of the lucky ones. Um I got housing, which is so good. It's affordable and um, yeah, it's um something I, I never really um thought about, but yeah. Um I got my housing pretty quickly because of the right place at the right time.
So where are you living now? Where's, what's your housing like now?
It's really good. Um I got James Cook in Waterloo. And um it's a high-rise and um really good um.
Do you live by yourself or is somebody else?
Yeah, I've just got me, myself, yeah. Um and yeah, I'm really lucky, I got it. Um I got fast track basically in Corona, so I was really lucky, right place, the right time, but um yeah, there's a lot of people homeless, like women and children still um on the street. And yeah, they're, they're wanna, they wanna demolish our buildings. And um there's a lot of people fighting for it, but um trying to do word of mouth and um there's a group getting signatures and um protests online, yeah.
Housing going and not.
Yeah, it's uh, um just fix the housing up. It doesn't need much maintenance. There's nothing wrong with it. Um the word is Albo's having a look at it, so Albo, fix that one up please. Yeah, that's like, yeah, so good.
That came up during coronavirus and the lockdowns?
Right. Um it was just before they started doing the fires.
Yeah.
So then they were like sweeping us all off the street. Um yeah, I just landed, yeah, as I said, the right place, the right time. Um because I didn't wanna go into the hotel, I was gonna have a bad experience.
So before you went into where you are now at Waterloo, where were you, where were you before? What was your living circle?
Waterloo was my last place. I was just camping with the crew down there.
What's camping with the crew down there mean?
Outside the Talbot.
Yeah.
Hostel.
Yeah.
And um.
On the streets?
Yeah, and you know, they look after, yeah, it's um we all camped down under the police station there.
Yeah.
It was pretty safe for everyone.
Yeah.
And you go, you can go to the Talbot during the day facilities.
Yeah.
And um yeah, that's where I got the housing.
How long have you been on the streets?
On and off, since since I got down to Sydney. Um I came from Cairns. So yeah, it's just floating. I wasn't in a hurry to get any housing. I was sort of up in the air what I was gonna do.
Yeah.
I never really contemplated housing. Um and yeah, I never actually applied for it straight away because um, which I, I would have done if I'd known now how good it is. But yeah, I didn't, I didn't wanna be tied down, but then I realized like, you're paying seventy, seventy-eight now a week. Um so you you're really free to travel anyway, if you, if that's what you wanna do. You can save up. There's an opportunity to save and you can go to Fraser Island anywhere you want for a couple of weeks. Um so you don't have to move. I I always like to move around and see the world, but um yeah, you can do that if you've got housing, but the problem is, there's just not enough.
So Christmas, one thing we're talking about at the Royal Commission is the experience of people with disabilities. What's been your experience in terms of health and getting um assistance?
Um. I'm not sure what helps out there. Um I just kinda deal with it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and I haven't really looked into that yet. I think having housing has been a big um thing because you've got somewhere to go. You can jump under the blankets and hide and pretend it's all not happening if need be. Um housing has been the key for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
And do you feel that like the housing is gonna help you just work out what you, what you wanna do in your life?
Yeah.
And where you wanna go and who you wanna be with?
Absolutely, yeah, it's a good base. Um it's affordable, so you can go back to the drawing board and yeah, really um plan what you wanna do.
What about work? Have you had a job in your life that you like doing?
I've, I've worked in all sorts of industries.
Lots of things have you done in work?
Um I've worked in mining, um fishing, trawling. My last job was in a fish factory, uh which was good work.
And um tell me about the neighbourhood centre. Is that sort of a place where you can get advice if you need advice and things? Work out, medical services and stuff like that?
Yeah, the people are great, everyone's friendly.
Yeah.
Um and yeah, any, any sort of advice you need, they'll give you.
Yeah.
Um so yeah, they've helped us with clothing and all sorts of things. Um yeah.
And some of the people that we've met at the um neighbourhood centre also have had real problems with their housing as well. What can you tell us about the friends that you've got through the neighbourhood centre about their experiences? Have they talked to you at all about that?
Yeah, well, it, it boils down to whether they have housing or not. Um yeah, we just talked to Colin and he'd been waiting thirty years.
Hmm.
Um. It's circumstantial, it's um needs-based, um yeah. Um so the, the problem is availability.
Hmm.
Um rent is way too high in Sydney and that's causing the problem.
Hmm. What do you think could be done about the problem?
Just off the top of my head, what must be done is there needs to be some kind of um tax on owning a hundred houses. People that are going around owning a hundred houses, there's people on the streets who've got none, aren't paying as much as one cent more in rates for every house after their first house. That has, must change. That's, that's the first thing, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't really like planned, thought that through, but that's just an obvious no-brainer to me.
Yeah.
You know, it's um just the rich getting richer. It's happening in all aspects of society. We've just seen it in Corona. Um all the wealth and power being concentrated. Um but that's just one simple thing that could change overnight and it's gotta change. Yeah.
Uh so Commissioners, we thank Christmas for his um contribution, and I think we, he did ask him whether he'd like to come today. We haven't seen him yet. So could we break now till eleven-thirty?
Yes, it's now five past eleven. We'll adjourn until eleven-thirty and then we'll resume with.
With uh our panel from the housing sector.
Thank you.
Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Mr Fogarty.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Commissioners, we have three witnesses for this session uh on uh the right to the commissioners in Sydney and Parramatta. Trina Jones from Harmlessness New South Wales, in the middle, Nada Nassar from Mission Australia, uh and uh on the left, Shane Jakupek from Niemeyer National. I understand each will be affirmed.
Yes, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence in the panel, which Mr Fogarty will conduct in due course. Uh I understand that each of you wishes to take the affirmation and therefore I shall ask you to follow the instructions of my associate over here, and he will administer the affirmation to you. Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation at the end. Can you please all say yes, or I do? To you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do, I do.
Thank you very much. Uh just to explain where everybody is, you can see Commissioner Galbly on the screen. She is in Melbourne, participating in the hearing remotely. Commissioner Ryan is to my left. I'm the Chair of the Royal Commission and Mr Fogarty of Council will now ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. I might, noting that the witnesses uh don't have statements before the Royal Commission firstly introduce them and their organisations briefly, if I may. Um first, Nada Nassar uh is Mission Australia's State Director of New South Wales ACT in Victoria, uh leading homelessness, child, youth and family, employment, mental health, alcohol and other drugs, AOD, strengthening communities and other community services. Prior to Mission Australia, Nada worked in senior roles in Housing New South Wales, other government human services agencies and in the not-for-profit sector. Mission Australia delivers a wide range of direct housing and homelessness supports across Australia, as well as other services to support people in need, including specialist homelessness services, tenancy support and specialist housing support services such as the Housing and Accommodation Support Initiative, otherwise known as HASSI. Uh in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one financial year alone, Mission Australia assisted approximately twenty-eight thousand people uh through its homelessness and housing services. Trina Jones is the CEO of Harmlessness New South Wales and has over fifteen years' experience leading responses to complex social uh issues including homelessness, increasing supply of quality social housing, community safety, uh drug and alcohol use in Australia, the UK and Ireland. Trina has designed and managed prevention and direct homelessness services, including case management, crisis accommodation, transitional housing, domestic and family violence and assertive outreach programmes. Prior to commencing as CEO of Harmlessness New South Wales this year, uh Trina worked at the City of Sydney for eight years, including as its Homelessness and Safe City Manager. Harmlessness New South Wales is the peak body for homelessness in New South Wales with its membership made up of over one hundred and fifty members comprising specialist homelessness services, organisations and individuals working to end homelessness. And our last panel member is Shane Jakupek. He's the Senior Operations Manager, Metro and North for Niemeyer National. Shane has worked in the community services sector in New South Wales for over twenty years with experience spanning mental health, homelessness and suicide prevention services. Uh Niemeyer itself is a national uh not-for-profit organisation providing community and clinical mental health, homelessness and suicide prevention services. It works in metro, regional and rural communities, supporting more than twenty-seven thousand Australians a year to make positive changes to their mental health and wellbeing. I propose to ask our panelists today to give evidence on four topics in order to assist the Royal Commission to better understand from their perspectives the reality currently as they see it for people with disability experiencing or at risk of homelessness in New South Wales. The first topic concerns the visi- visibility or indeed invisibility of people with disability in the homelessness sector. of people with disability in the homelessness sector. Commissioners, I'll pause at the end of each of the topics, um, and invite you to ask questions as we go if that, if that suits. Panel members, each of you has extensive.
What are the other three?
Uh, the thr- the other three. The first, the second topic, Chair, is in relation to barriers preventing people with disability.
Yes.
Exiting and pathways out of homelessness, segueing to the third topic, uh, which are models, strategies, projects, best practice that our witnesses have experienced or acknowledged in respect of to essentially break down those barriers and pathways out of homelessness for people with disability. And the last topic uh, is their visions for people with disability and housing and I suppose homelessness twenty years from now in New South Wales.
Okay, just one other question. Mr Jakupek's organisation, is that word that I heard an acronym or is it the name of the organisation?
Commissioner, good question. Um, Niemai used to stand for the North Eastern Alliance of Mentally Ill. It was a small organisation in North East Melbourne. Um, being a national organisation, we've, uh, now just say Niemai National.
Right. But what does it stand for?
North Eastern Alliance of Mentally Ill. That was, it used to, it's sort of like Qantas.
Right.
What does Qantas stand for?
Thank you. Now we've got that clarified, Mr Fogarty will explore issue number one.
Thank you Chair. And each of you has extensive expertise and experience in homelessness and housing and the disadvantaged experience uh, by people that sees them homeless or at risk of homelessness. And what would be helpful, of course, for the Royal Commission is to understand where does disability fit in? Um, is it detected and recognised in the homelessness sector? And if it is, how does the sector respond? Um, I might, um, ask each of you separately, but please, if you feel you want to contribute, do so. Trina, I'll, I'll start with you. Um, does your organisation or your members, I understand many of whom are SHSs or Specialised Homelessness Services, collect data on the prevalence of disability, um, amongst people experiencing homelessness?
Yes, data is collected as part of intake and assessment, um, forms in specialist homelessness services. However, because clients may not wish to disclose that they have a disability or services may not mandate that question on the intake assessment form because they can be quite extensive, the data can be inconsistent. The data is also often collected for reporting purposes and due to the lag on these reports being available and the data lag in general for homelessness services, like we're still using census data from two thousand and sixteen. It's difficult for services to use this data to actually inform their service delivery. So when we talk about understanding the prevalence of disability within the homelessness sector, that becomes a major challenge. Another challenge that the sector faces is shared terminology. So the Australian Institute for, um, Health and Welfare, which runs the reports and collects the data, defines disability as reduced capacity of core activities. This differs to the NDIS definition, which focuses on, broadly focuses on impairment and permanency. And then the Centrelink definition for the purposes of disability support pension, which focuses on a specific medical condition or ability to participate in the workforce. Now, while I understand the needs for these different definitions to meet the needs of the programmes for individuals being recognised as having a disability in one service and then having to re-prove that each time you try to access housing, try to access support, try to access payment, it starts to become very frustrating, convoluted and difficult. And so for those reasons, it's difficult for us to accurately articulate the amount of people receiving homelessness support that have a disability.
Do you think that affects the services provided to those people with disability in, in those services?
I think it affects the ability for robust and holistic support.
Right.
Specialist homelessness services work tirelessly with resources available to them to support people at risk or experiencing homelessness to access long-term housing with support. The difficulty in navigating the services that are required for people with disability, like NDIS, like, um, modified housing, like the mental health clinician support that's required places, difficulty for specialist homelessness services to navigate that, which then falls back to the person experiencing homelessness and creates a further barrier.
From you.
Is that a matter of collecting data or is it a matter of assessing the individual people who come to your attention?
Yes, Commissioners, both. So one of the challenges is the assessment meeting the needs for the individual, but then it's also about being able to navigate the system with the right evidence base to make sure that those services can actually be provided. We heard from the witness with lived experience earlier of the burden of proof that's placed on individuals to continually demonstrate their need for additional supports. And this, not having access to that data in a collective and coordinated way can inhibit the delivery of services.
Which are the categories of people that would come to your agency and whom you would regard as homeless or at risk of homelessness, who would not be people with disability? What sort of people would they be?
Our membership supports a diverse range of people, so we represent a hundred and fifty members that provide homelessness services. So it's a diverse range of people. For those that do not have a disability would be potentially people with the, you know, living in poverty, people with addiction, gambling, drug and alcohol use, um, people fleeing domestic and family violence, which is the leading cause of homelessness in Australia. But often the case is that there's many of these are intersected with people who do have a disability and their needs are compounded by these further complex, um, challenges.
On, on one view, drug addiction would be a disability.
That's right. An addiction can be perceived to be, yes, that's right. And a systemic approach to homelessness data collection, information sharing and monitoring is what's required so that we can identify additional vulnerabilities and complexing and compounding factors, particularly for people with disability.
Shane, can I ask you, are your observations similar to those of Trina's? Uh, and do you see a way that it could be improved?
Yeah, um, thank you. Just before we start, I'd like to acknowledge the Daraq people, traditional owners of the land where we are. I think it's very important to mention that in the context of homelessness. Um, we work with between twenty to thirty percent of the population on the street who, um, come from average or on the background. And it's, um, one of these, um, intersections, um, that complicates many of the, the challenges people have in accessing services, particularly then once you add the layer of disability as well. Um, I do agree, um, with, with Trina on many of the, the things she mentioned. Um, the, the key thing I wanted to mention around data collection is all of the services on the, on the street, uh, they, they, when we collect data, it's self-reported data. Um, sometimes people don't identify, as Trina mentioned, with a disability. Sometimes they don't know that they have a disability. Um, they may have some cognitive impairment that was never picked up, uh, through, um, brain injury, um, accident, um, you know, misuse of drugs and alcohol, et cetera. Um, and so when we're thinking about access to services, um, such as the, um, some of the programs in, um, run by mental health teams or the NDIS, uh, people need to have, um, proof of that evidence. And the idea of living on the street, having an itinerant lifestyle, having a disability, trauma, r- range of complexities, and then not having a specialist to be able to provide that assessment is, is a real big issue. Uh, many of the assessments, uh, that people require, um, to gain access, for example, like a neuro psych assessment will be two thousand dollars plus. Um, and so these are, these are not little barriers. We heard the previous, um, witnesses in the, uh, earlier session talk about some of the costs to access an OT report. Um, and an OT report is, is cheap comparatively if you need a psychiatrist's report for psycho-social disability, et cetera. So there are many, many barriers to collecting the data that's then required to access the services. Um, and, you know, one of those big barriers is, is that, um, the, the cost and, and accessible. So a GP, for example, typically will not support someone's application for a medical assessment if they've not met them before. So if you're on the street, you don't have a regular GP, um, countless times staff in the service that I work with will take someone to a GP for a medical assessment, um, and they'll go, no, I'm not going to sign this off. I need to see you two or three times. By the time you get that, that person may have moved to another area, maybe down to the state. Um, and then that creates an added barrier to accessing housing, as an example.
And the, and the proof that you're talking about in terms of OTs, et cetera, do your, does your service provide those sorts of assessments in-house or does it have to go out of house for clients?
Um, we, we provide, we, we, we source them out, out of house. We, we don't have the capacity for that within our homelessness services, but, um, it is one of the things that, um, as a service system, we're re-looking at around, do we need to provide that stuff in-house? How do we do that? Um, I know there's some good collaboratives in the, in the city. I work with my colleagues here around working with, um, people with a lot of complexity and we, we have a, a, a review panel where we try and unpack all the key issues and then target the barriers. Um, and that works well, but it's, it's one little piece of the puzzle in, in the city and it's not a nationwide, uh, approach.
I think too, I might be skipping ahead, but Niemai has sought or is setting up a multidisciplinary service and does it, what, what are the skills or services that would be in one of those?
Yeah, so, um, access to mental health care, so with psychiatric disability or, or psycho, um, psycho-social disability, um, accessing, uh, a mental health team or, or a mental health case manager in community requires, um, you know, proof, proof of that. You need to have complexity to a particular threshold, um, for, um, homeless support caseworkers, um, that don't maybe have that mental health knowledge and background. That can be really difficult to navigate. Um, because again, you're, you're working on housing, supporting someone to settle in home and, and, and stabilise. Then you're also working on their trauma, their, their maybe physical health needs. There might be medications that they need to be accessing for, um, for ailments, et cetera, for, for injuries.
Hmm.
Um, and, and then the mental health access and support or specialist mental health support, like maybe a psychiatrist review, um, to access is actually quite difficult to do. And the private sector, very expensive. Most people can't afford that. Um, some agencies can subsidise that, but again, it's a massive barrier. Um, so, so we are starting to look to, um, employ mental health clinicians in some of our services. We're employing psychiatrists to be able to break down some of those barriers, I guess, um, for, for access to those assessments.
And have a one-stop shop.
Definitely.
To assist with those complex needs. Uh, Nada, in, in your experience, Mission Australia's or elsewhere, are there other innovative programs or projects you've seen or been involved in that helped stem this problem with data collection and response to, to that?
Uh, yeah, sure. I also want to start by acknowledging, uh, the Daraq people and pay my respect to their elders, past, present and emerging. Uh, yes, the, I, um, um, agree with my colleagues around the challenge of data, the challenge of definitions, uh, the challenge with even from our experience, uh, clients themselves don't, often don't, when, when they're asked, do they have a disability? Either they choose not to disclose it uh, or don't see a mental illness as a disability. So there's a, a broad perception, uh, that disability is, is a physical disability or an intellectual disability. Um, uh, so in turn, one of the innovations that we're involved in is the by-name list, which is through the In Street Sleeping Collaboration.
Yeah.
And I think that's an interesting innovation because it's looking at collecting data based on an individual through an assessment of their vulnerability. So the assessment of their vulnerability includes their disability, the mental illness, the whole range of, uh, physical conditions, any, uh, uh, circumstances or condition that impacts on their ability to sustain housing uh, and indicates that they need support, uh, to, to sustain that housing. That is a really good, good tool. I mean, it has, uh, it's still emerging and it has some limitations, but it's, uh, it, it, it is a, a, a good innovation. Looking at some of the data from the by-name list, uh, we can see that, uh, I think about seventy-three percent of the clients reported that they have a diagnosed mental health, uh, condition. So you can see the dis- the difference between, uh, that and, and some of the other data that we have seen. Of course, this group of clients, uh, using the by-name list, uh, is, uh, rough sleepers. And so it, they are people who are at the more complex end. So you would expect to see a much higher proportion of disability uh, uh, and other can health conditions.
How do clients come to your attention?
Sorry?
How do clients come to your attention?
Uh, broad services, uh, from a number of, uh, from a number of areas. So they might be referred to us from a housing provider. So we have partnerships with community housing and, and public housing providers, uh, and.
And in what circumstances would a housing provider send someone to you?
Yeah, so that is our work on prevention, early intervention. So if there's a client who has, uh, a, a mental illness and needs support or someone who is at risk of being evicted, they may be in rental arrears, they may have a hoarding and squalor, uh, issue. Uh, our role, we would go in and work with those tenants to prevent them from becoming homeless. So that's one, one avenue. We also have referrals from mental health teams. Uh, we have referrals from, uh, we have a, a team that works with, uh, with people on the street. So we can work with people on the street to help channel them into other services, uh, and, and into housing. Um, so we have, um, a number of sources of referral.
If someone comes to your attention who's living rough on the street, what do you do?
Um, a number of responses. So for the first instance, we need to understand their, their situation. So we would do an assessment, we would work with them, we'd find out what other services they may be accessing. Is there anyone else that's working with them? Um, so the first thing is to understand their situation. Uh, if they need emerged, uh, often we would try and place them in some form of temporary or emergency accommodation to just, you know, stabilise their situation. Uh, and then from there, we would work intensively with them to help them, whether it's, uh, an NDIS assessment, whether it's a housing application to help them access housing.
What if they don't want help?
Um, we, we work really hard to encourage people. If they don't want help, it may be because, uh, they have had a previous bad experience. So we would work through that with them to try and understand why is it that they don't want that help. Uh, sometimes it's helping them access treatment as well. So they may need some particular treatment. Uh, so, yeah. So if they don't want help, it's usually because they have, uh, a past, maybe previous, uh, difficult experience or maybe they don't believe that the solution is going to suit their needs.
Can I just interject here? I have a feeling that the speed with which some of you are speaking is so quick, our interpreters would be having trouble. Um, in fact, I'm having trouble with it. Did you refer to your dataset as a by-name list?
That it's not our dataset as an organisation. This is, um, uh, council was asking about an innovation we're involved with. So the by-name list is a, a dataset by an organisation called the End Street Sleeping Collaboration, which we are a partner with. Um, so yes, they are the ones that developed that by-name list. And we are a number of organisations are partners working with that organisation on the by-name list. An apologies for speaking too fast.
No, no.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Shane, just on that topic before we leave at the by-name list, I understand you've had some involvement in that and there was an issue initially around consent and that, and that information being shared amongst different service providers.
Yeah, I think this is a very important, um, issue around some of the challenges people have in navigating systems. Every organisation gets stuck on their own consent. Every client needs to consent with every organisation. Um, that's the general practice. One thing I do want to mention with the End Street Sleeping Collaboration, it's an, it's a very interesting collaboration because it involves, um, uh, NGO services that also has representation with the Department of Communities and Justice at an executive level. It also has involvement from the Premier Cabinet, um, department as well. And so, um, government hears directly what's happening. We work together collectively with the, the service providers and the government to actually, um, hopefully, um, build this dataset. And, um, the tool that we have been using is the screen tool is the V I S, that Vulnerability Index Service Prioritisation Decision Tool. Um, that, um, there was a big consent question around how to use that and who can access that. And so, um, through lots of legal advice from Department of Communities and Justice, from every NGO involved in that process, um, there was agreement that we could develop a consent form where the person that was street sleeping would consent for agencies with their best interest, looking to support them to access housing, which is what their primary goal was. That information could be shared and other agencies being involved with that, if it was within that best interest. And we managed to get the government on board with that as well. And, and what it means now is there's an electronic by-name list that Microsoft, uh, uh, helped develop where we put that key information about those individuals. We, we allocate, we can document who the key service provider is with that person. And given the itinerant nature of rough sleeping, if someone moves to another area, they can look up. they can look up that system and they can see who's been connected. They can see what work's been done and they can continue the work with the individual. And historically, people get lost in the system and the new agency starts from scratch and has to do that work again. So it is, it is a really good innovation and it's, it's still very early days in that space, but it's, it's, it's a promising innovation in that the consent issue was managed to get resolved. And, and I think that's something that really needs to be looked at moving forward because the disparate nature of services means that we work in silos and, and we clearly can't keep doing business as usual and working in silos moving forward.
How do you know the consent is informed in that case?
Absolutely. We talk to the person and if we are aware of a disability that impairs cognition, part of that process may be supporting them to access a guardian if required. So we have, part of our partnership is, within that collaboration is St Vincent's Hospital are on there as well and they're represented. They have a really innovative homeless health team, which can actually go out and meet people and make those assessments. So it's not NGO support agencies making decisions about someone's cognition. It's actually health teams that specialize in being able to do that, can make those decisions and support that informed consent.
You referred to silos. I'd like to move to the next topic. If the other commissioners, Commissioner Garmally or Commissioner Ryan don't have any questions on this introductory topic.
I, I know you, could I ask the collaboration that you've got that's created the by-name list, is that confined to a state or is it the national database?
Happy to answer that. It is a statewide collaboration.
Or New South Wales.
For New South Wales, yes. It is, it is based on a model operating in other parts of the world, but this is the only place where it is a statewide collaboration.
Commissioner Garmally, do you have any questions at this point? I think you're on mute, Commissioner.
Look, I'm just thinking about mental illness and the interface with intellectual disability and physical disability and many other disabilities for that matter. And whether that's those interfaces, whether there's data collected on that would, would be a question. You know, the 75%, I'd be interested to know how many other, what other disabilities that 75% had. So you may not want to answer that now. And then my second question was in the informed consent area, do you use supported decision-making rather than guardian, going to the guardian? You know, if there's a, is, is there a whole culture of supported decision-making?
Commissioner, just in relation to your question on the data, I don't have a breakdown of the 73%, but we know from the by-name list, for example, 23% of clients overall reported having a sustained and acquired brain injury. 15% reported having a physical disability that limits their access to housing. So there are a number of points of data there that can provide an overview of, of different types of conditions and disabilities in relation to this cohort. In my organization, we do collect data that does break down the condition. Unfortunately, as, as Trina said earlier, many clients choose not to respond to that question. And those who do respond to that question often miss a physical, miss disability, miss their mental illness as a disability. So they will often say no to the question of having a disability. So we do need to get better at that data question.
Thank you.
Trina, do you want to respond to the?
Yes, I just wanted to add, if possible, also, I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Darg people and pay my respect. I'd also like to add, in terms of when we talk about the by-name list and other lists, they are talking specifically about people sleeping rough. There are examples internationally that show robust information management systems across the whole system. So they talk about people at risk of homelessness as well as people who are street sleeping. And that's integrated in a way that has consent, privacy, cybercrime considerations and data protection considerations built into it. There is a model in Canada that I would point to called the Homelessness Individuals and Families Information System. I'd also like to add, if possible, that formal data collections undercount the prevalence of impairment and disability and the level of need for assistance for First Nations communities. Our members tell us all the time that Indigenous communities do not define disability in the same ways as mainstream services do. And this often leads to underrepresentation of this group, despite First Nations community members being overrepresented in homelessness populations. So I would like to add that also.
Thank you, Trina. Did anyone, is anyone able to comment on the, the informed consent?
Yeah, look, Commissioner, I'll, I'll mention that one. So the sector works from a very person-centered approach. And it's really the first protocol is to talk to the individual and work with, with them. I know it was mentioned earlier, or the question was earlier around, what if people don't want to, you know, access housing? Or, or, you know, there's lots of reasons why people don't want to. What we know, security and safety is critical. You know, housing needs to be a human right and shelter is one of the first key things people need. If someone is not wanting shelter, there's probably a lot of reasons behind that. And that could be trauma, it could be, it, it could be that they don't have capacity to make those decisions for themselves as well. And so when we get to informed consent, we work with the individual. And as you persistently continually go back to that person and meet with them and engage them, you get to know them as well and you understand if there are some possible impairments, even if the person is not articulating that they have a disability, you'll get a bit of a sense. And that's where we have some good, again, in the inner city, there's a really good coordination group that looks at, I guess, the, there's an assertive outreach team so that they, staff will go out on the street and engage people that are street sleeping regularly, consistently to get to know them and offer them housing. And if they don't, they will continue to come back, get to know them. And then if required, refer them to this, I guess, coordination panel where they try to unpack the complexity for individuals. So many times there might be a underlying disability. So it could be intellectual, it could be cognitive impairment that hasn't been assessed yet. And so we would work together to work out who has the strongest relationship with that person. How do we get past the barrier of cost for that assessment? And how do we support that assessment to occur? Which will then allow us to get a better understanding around, is it informed consent particularly? But even, even if someone does have a trust, have a guardianship order, if we feel that the only way to access services is to refer that person for guardianship, we still work with the individual and the guardian together. It's not about what the guardian says that's legally, what, what goes. But we want to make sure that the individual is coming along that journey as well with them.
Is the assumption upon which you operate that no person could rationally refuse an opportunity to have shelter?
I think our members would say that you start where the person is at. If that person wants to get access to food and companionship, we start from there and you build that trust and rapport. Having worked myself in assertive outreach for people sleeping on the street, lots of people's first conversation will be, and we heard from Christmas earlier, that wasn't an option for me. I didn't think that I was going to look for housing. And yet, when you see that work and you put that time in with the person and they access a house, they think, you know, they'll often tell you, I can't imagine it another way. I'm connected to my community, I'm improving my health, I'm getting my supports needs met. So for those that would say, I don't want access to a house, when you unpack that, what that actually means is I don't want to be re-traumatized by a system that can't meet my needs in a way that's not accessible for me to communicate at a time in my life when I'm in crisis and stress.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to barriers, and I think we started to touch on those. And Shane, you referred to the silos. If I can ask you what they are, but really in a framework of barriers affecting particularly people with disability in their pathways out of homelessness. Shane, if you can inform us about, I guess, there's probably many, but the big ticket that NEMI sees for its constituents?
Yeah, absolutely. So if we're talking about people with disabilities, but just across the board, accessibility in housing, we, we heard earlier today as well, that's, that's a, that's a big ticket item. There is not enough affordable housing for people to access. At the disability layer, we have the ongoing issue there of having modifications being able to be done and met to the needs of the person with the disability. But then also being able to find that in a place that's where their connections are. One of the big barriers for people accessing housing from the street is they will lose their community. If they have been sleeping on the street for a while, they have their community, they have their safe place. That's what they know, they have their people. And you move into an individual place far away from that group, you don't know the services, you don't know the people, you, you have isolation. There's a whole range of what ways of working and relearning how to live in, in a property. So that's, that's one of the barriers a lot of the time for people actually accessing that. So having a variety of different types of accommodation and, and tailored modifications for people with disabilities is really, really key. If we think about psychosocial disability as an example, that's, there may not be a physical requirement that is apparent initially. But if someone has suicidal ideation, and that's a common theme, it doesn't make sense to put them in a high-rise building with a balcony. And, and that needs to be a consideration. And it's not, it's overlooked a lot of the time because the person doesn't know to articulate that. As, as Nada mentioned, it's not a high priority that I'd say that has a disability. And, you know, so, so some of that can be missed. A couple of the other, I guess, big structural barriers that we, we see, certainly the difference between city and regional housing and options is, is, is growing more disparate. Like it's hard enough to get accommodation in the city, rent's expensive, but more and more we're seeing in the regional towns with people moving out of the cities, with, with the pandemic and working from home. Housing access is, is reducing further and further for people that actually require subsidized housing. And so I know working in, we have a program working in Orange and it was almost impossible for housing providers to find a rental property that could be available, that they could lease to then put some money. And, and that's when there is money available to subsidize that, you still can't find that housing. So, so that's a, that's a huge issue across, across the geographies. I guess, education and employment opportunities, there's a big barrier there as well. I know there's just been a reform nationally again around the employment services sector. That was recently in, in the news around, you know, many of the services being defunded and being refunded, new services being refunded. That cycle has been going for the last 20 years that I've been in the workforce. Every four or five years, there's a whole bunch of services that are cut off. And the big reason that I heard on the, on the news this time, again, same story, people with disabilities are sort of parked and left because they get their first payment as a provider and then they're too hard to work with. And so they're left on the books and they're not supported. And, you know, it's the same old story. So we need better targeted, supported programs for people to actually get into employment and education. There are, again, good international models, individual placement support programs where you focus with the individual what they're wanting to do. And then you source that employment and it's been very successful. Like we do some of that ourselves. I know there's been approaches, attempts to do that within the social housing space as well. But, but that, I guess, education, housing is one thing, education and employment is the other thing. That's the pathway out of poverty. Not everyone wants to sit on a, a disability pension or a social security amount if they don't have to. But we need to be able to support people to have the, the right services to actually be able to move forwards with that.
And is there a disconnect between the silos in, between those different services? And NEMI, part of its wraparound support is to bring those together?
Yeah, absolutely. So time and time again, people are connected with this, with employment services and they will typically go, they're not doing anything for me. I've been to five different employment providers, they're not helping. And so where we can, we'll facilitate a, hopefully a better relationship with their employment provider. And if, if, if they, we can't do that in some of our programs, we've, we've stepped up employment workers to do, to work within that IPS, individual placement support model to support people because we know they're not getting it in the mainstream system.
Trina, can I ask you about barriers that particularly affect people with disability on their pathway out or preventing them exiting homelessness?
I'd like to talk about three key themes. I'd like to talk about housing, funding and coordination and capacity. So to understand the intersections between homelessness and disability, I think it's important to note that our members are increasingly telling us that people coming to their services have a disability, right? And they have varying types of disability, physical, mental and needing additional supports. So when we understand the issue of housing as a barrier, we also must frame this in the context that we cannot solve homelessness without housing. There's currently a waiting list of about 50,000 people in New South Wales with the average wait time of up to 10 years. The current investment in social housing in New South Wales is atrophying and in decline. And with the current investment of approximately 700 houses a year, it will actually take 70 years to meet the current waiting list. So we talk about 10-year waiting lists, it's more likely to be 70. And that's for the current demand and doesn't take into consideration future need. In 2021, over 70,000 people experiencing homelessness were supported in New South Wales. And as I've said, a high prevalence of those were people with disability. We know in terms of investment in services, that services cannot meet demand. Of those 70,000 people, that was 30% more than the services are currently funded for.
Where does that figure come from?
That comes from the Australian Institute of Housing Welfare, so the AIHW. I'm happy to submit this with footnotes if it's useful.
That might have been just a bit fast.
Apologies. Happy to submit my notes referencing statistics with foot, footnotes. So with 70,000 people experiencing homelessness, and that's 30% over the amount that services are funded for, a further 40% are turned away because services cannot meet demand. The investment in support services, the Productivity Commission has found, averages about $36 per day, okay? So $36 a day to support a person experiencing homelessness. We know that that is simply not enough to actually meet the complexity of need, the coordination and the practical support needed to help people to exit homelessness. Although our services and our members do that every day, it's not keeping up with the demand. We need five-year contracts to enable certainty and innovation in service delivery, particularly for people with disability, given the complexity of need required and the coordination across state, federal and local services. So that idea of housing supply not meeting the demand, funding for services not being able to keep up with demand and coordination across local, state and federal governments being disparate, disjointed and lacking capacity in each of those areas to integrate are the main drivers for people falling out of the safety net and continuing to experience homelessness. So.
I understand the point about the backlog of accessible, safe housing for people with disability. It's obviously a fundamental question. But when you come to something like coordination and funding and bear in mind the number of programs at Commonwealth and state level that have been developed over the last several decades, have they not worked? And if, if not, why not?
They're not working because they're not investing enough for the level of complexity of need.
So what's just money?
Money and people can solve homelessness, right? And political will. So one of the things that we make a recommendation for from homelessness in New South Wales is the appointment of a homelessness commissioner. A person who can ensure that there are key performance indicators across the departments in government, health, justice, housing and homelessness services to make shared accountability of governments to end homelessness. And that's for people street sleeping and people at risk. At a time when there's increasing numbers of people experiencing homelessness, huge atrophying stock in social housing. huge atrophying stock in social housing, it's never been harder to find a rental. There's less than zero point zero one percent of rentals available, and that's from the Anglicare Snapshot Rental Affordability for people with disability. The safety net is not available for the most vulnerable. And that's why we're seeing so many people fall into homelessness and stay homeless without an ability to exit. So the, there is funding, but there's a lack of coordination and the funding is not enough. And even if the services were well-funded and well-coordinated, without housing, we can't end homelessness.
Where do your respective organisations fit within the strategies that have been developed, particularly by the Commonwealth, to deal with homelessness with the professed objective of ending homelessness? Where where do your organisations fit? And how do you either facilitate the coordination or are frustrated in coordinating?
Our sector is leading the innovation and calling on government for further investment. A good example is a programme called Together Home, which was stood up in response to COVID-nineteen pandemic. And that was a programme that brought together all of the services to support people who were street-sleeping into housing with support. And that housing was managed by community housing providers, support was provided by specialist services, and government agencies came to the table with the investment to enable that to happen rapidly and at scale. And we saw record numbers of people exit homelessness with support.
That's an example of coordination working.
With investment and political will.
Yes. But where does you, where does your organisation fit within the strategies that the Commonwealth has developed? Are you part of that strategy? Are you outside the strategy? I'm asking these questions because we don't, not your responsibility, but we don't have a statement. So I'm not quite sure of just where your organisation fits within the overall framework.
So homelessness in New South Wales exists to build the capability of people and capacity assistance to end homelessness. So we mobilise our members to understand the issues on the ground, and then we advocate to make those issues known at the strategic level and influence policy, investment and coordination at local, state and federal governments.
And where do your organisations get their money from?
We're funded by the state government predominantly.
Holy.
Predominantly.
The SHS funded is under the broader Commonwealth partnerships, Commonwealth State partnerships to to support homelessness. So funding is channelled from the Commonwealth to the states. And I believe there's a joint funding arrangement as well. So the state government contributes as well as the Commonwealth government to the SHS programme.
So do you regard yourself, your organisation, as an integral part of the national strategy to reduce homelessness?
Absolutely. So yes, we are delivering, so in relation to Mission Australia, we deliver services that are funded, funding that is channelled from the Commonwealth to the states, but also states contribute to that funding. So we are providers of the services that are funded through those channels. We also do have an advocacy role. So as a national organisation, we work, you know, with our colleagues like Homelessness New South Wales and other organisations to advocate to the Commonwealth and to contribute to national plans around ending homelessness. So we do make that contribution through our advocacy role.
Chair, I might not even time move to the next topic, but if Commissioner Galvallay has any questions at the moment?
It was just one question, and this is to you, Trina, I think. Are you involved in the whole universal design for accessible housing? And, you know, if you've got New South Wales governments not adopting the minimum accessibility standards, do you make representation on that topic to the New South Wales government?
Absolutely. We've called on the state government and continue to call on the state government to ensure that universal housing design with, and the livable housing design guidelines are adapted and are are in place to retrofit existing stock. And we are proponents for the guidelines that recommend inclusion of the features that make homes easier and safer for all occupants, particularly people with disability. We also note, and again to the witness statement earlier from Miss Morehead's house, the setup of the home does not always deliver the needs for the occupants. An example was given where no curtains were in place. I'm not sure if people are aware, with significant heat, the temperatures in social housing and public housing and substandard accommodation can reach dangerous levels without, particularly without window treatments. One of the particular risks for people with disability, particularly people who are taking antipsychotic medication, is this can have adverse impacts on their medication and cause significant impacts for themselves and others. So the type of housing, the quality of that housing, the energy rating, the accessibility and the ongoing maintenance are key advocacy issues for us as the peak body.
Thank you. And and I'll take it the pipeline to private rental from public housing, that 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 has to be accessible completely too, so.
Absolutely.
The literature speaks of some models, and I'd like to invite you to discuss those and perhaps adaptations that you might see necessary for people with disability or adaptations in the work that each of your organisations does. There's the Housing First model, wraparound service model, sometimes referred to as case management services and support. And then on a global level, early intervention and prevention. Shane, of those models, are they adopted by MIMI?
Yeah. So the the first one you mentioned, the the Housing First model. I guess for for the commissioners, that in itself assumes that we get the person that's homeless, we put them in a long-term house, so not a short-term rental, put it into a property where they can be there for long term. And we provide support around them, we wrap that around them to meet their needs. So it doesn't assume that people need to be housing-ready. It actually gets them off the street, gives that fundamental safety and security for that person, and then we work with them. Now, there are various programmes that have been established to operate in this approach. But the challenge with most of them to date is the accessibility to the rapid housing. That is, again, really key. It's a great model, it works when you can get the housing and you have the funded support. MIMI is funded and just recently got refunded for three years for a programme in Sydney called Supported Transition and Engagement Programme. The government's worked really well to recognise that short-term support for someone that has a disability and has maybe been sleeping rough for a long period of time is not appropriate. Three months' support is not okay, six months' support is not okay. Evidence suggests minimum eighteen months is what's required to support that person to feel safe, feel connected to their community and learn the skills to to be able to continue without supports or reduced supports. That programme allows for eighteen months to three years of support. And with our community housing partners, it's a permanent housing outcome, and that's really key. And we've had amazing success with that programme moving forward. In saying that, it's not specifically for people that are homeless with disabilities, it's for people that are homeless. And the levels of support that are funded might allow workers to see someone for maybe once a week or twice a week. That's inadequate for someone with long-term, complex physical and mental health issues. And I guess that's an area that further investment could be done. Trina mentioned the Together Home Programme. That was, that's, that's a good model, but it's funded for two years. So it's not a long-term housing outcome. But there is a funding pool to provide top-up support for where there is complexity. So the the key thing is about flexibility in a funding model to support the person's needs for how long they need. And that long-term housing outcome is 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 good. One, one final thing I wanted to mention here is we still have a bit of an us-and-them approach with, say, mental health is seen by, is managed through the Ministry of Health in New South Wales and the and the health funding stream. Homelessness is managed through the Department of Communities and Justice and the housing funding stream. And it's still a little bit of a dance of whose client is it or who needs to take priority for that? The reality is when someone's on the ground, they they intersect both of those across the board. And so there does, as Trina mentioned, there does need to be better coordination between departments because some of the highly funded programmes that Nada mentioned, the Housing Accommodation Support Initiative funded through the Ministry of Health, that allows people to be supported daily and multiple times a day if required to be able to live independently in community. It's a very successful programme, it's been running since two thousand and three and continues to be expanded. So so it can be done, and it can be done with complexity. If the person wants to live independently, we should be able to put the supports around them to to do that.
Before moving to Nada and Trina on this topic, does the NDIS have a role to play? Or have you seen it having a role to play to support that that model?
Yeah, so many, many people in some of those programmes are on a pathway to an NDIS package or may have had one. The challenge is that it's a long process. And for all the reasons we talked about earlier around finding the person when they're on the street, particularly getting them to the right specialist, paying for those assessments, navigating the process, that can be a really long process. Once you've got someone in a house, if you get someone in a house, you know where they are. You can go and support them, they're safe, and you can actually fast-track that process more. It's it's still complicated, but you can actually support that person to get that NDIS package quicker once they're housed, once they're on the street still, it's it's very difficult.
Noting noting the slowdown requirement, Nada, not not to you particularly. What about Mission Australia and 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 models of support for clients with disability?
Yeah, I I I think there are quite a number of really great models out in the sector, both in the specialist homelessness services system as well as outside that system. And I think it's important to recognise that. But as Trina said, they're often not funded well enough, but also they are often not across the whole system. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about their Housing Accommodation Support Initiative, which I refer to as HASSI. HASSI is a really great programme that manages that that integration well between health and the NDIS. The Housing and Support Initiative is funded through health, and it basically works from a client-centred approach and provides the level of support that is needed as long as it's needed. So it, you know, could be sometimes we might provide three hours a week of support, sometimes we might provide thirty hours a week of support. So it's very much based on the needs of the clients. It takes a wraparound support approach. So we have a caseworker who works with the client and helps them to access any other service they may need. So they may need alcohol and other drug treatment, they might need an NDIS package, they might need a range of other services. Of course, they also help them with housing. So the key part of it is sustaining and helping people to access and to sustain their housing. In our NDIS, in our HASSI programme, we have about twenty percent of clients, just under twenty percent, who have an NDIS, who have an NDIS package. And we manage to do that dance well between health and the disability NDIS services. So the, to, in order to access HASSI, you have to have a psychosocial disability. That is a key eligibility criteria. So while those clients would also be eligible for the NDIS, we also work with some of them to access additional services through the NDIS. So they may access, particularly if they have a physical disability or they need additional supports that the HASSI programme is unable to provide. So that's a really good example that works well between the housing system, the health system and and the disability system in an integrated way. And it means the client is not the one who is navigating the system. It is actually us as service providers who are working together to navigate that system, you know, on behalf of the client and with the client. Interestingly, HASSI has both provides services in the community, so in housing that is in the community, usually public housing or social housing, but also we do have supported accommodation. So there is, you know, people who are unable to live independently are supported through a group home setting with twenty-four-seven support on site. Sometimes twenty-four-seven support on site for those who have very high levels of need. But sometimes the support is a drop-in support. So we have one facility, for example, on the Northern Beaches that has, where our staff drop in three times a week to work with a group. There are about eight people living there. We drop in to provide support, to to check in, to help with whatever is needed.
You're a registered NDIS provider?
We're not a registered NDIS support provider. So the client in, so we are registered only in relation to our aged care services. So we do have three aged care facilities, and those aged care facilities are registered as is required for all aged care providers to be registered if they work with people.
I thought you said you have group homes.
No, so they're not, so they're not group homes as in the, for people with disability. They are, it's a group, it's a shared accommodation setting, I guess that what I'm saying is. It's a, it's, it's a, it's a group, it's a group setting. So basically, it's an accommodation where a number of people live within that residential setting. And we do have a number of residential.
Who's the landlord?
So, community housing providers, usually the landlords. So in this particular example, it's the landlord is the community housing provider. The tenants who live in that facility provide, pay rent, social housing, level rent to the community housing provider. And us as the support provider go in and provide the support.
Thank you. Trina.
What were on that?
Sorry, Krishna.
Are you speaking about the Mission Australia's Coffs Harbour facility when you were talking about a facility?
I wasn't specifically, but the Coffs Harbour, in Coffs Harbour, we have another model that that's a really good model as well. It is specifically provides accommodation for young people. We have a, it's a forty-bed unit complex, a forty-unit complex. And within that unit complex, we've earmarked one floor for young people and specifically young people who need support to sustain their tenancy. And we work with those young people to actually, obviously, maintain their housing, but also support them to access education, training, employment.
Can I just ask you about the forty-unit?
Yeah.
Proposal. I have some experience in deinstitutionalising places. And living out in the western suburbs of Sydney, like Campbelltown and teaching there, it has to be said that the idea of housing a whole group of people who are homeless together in large concentrations has not been a happy experience. What's different about housing forty, having forty studio units for young people in a place like Coffs Harbour? How do you assure that that isn't going to become what has sometimes been described as tomorrow's ghettos? And so on, for example, there's proposals in Sydney to demolish the Waterloo Towers and so on. I mean, is that really a model form? Or is that being something that's been created by the necessity of the available funding?
So that's, that's a really good question, Commissioner. Firstly, the Coffs Harbour building is, is, only has one floor for young people and the rest is a, is a broad social housing. In terms of the mix, we generally, and I think the general practice now, wherever there's a, a, a social housing development, there's usually a housing mix that we work to. So a combination of social housing, affordable housing and some private rental as well to try and create more of a social mix. I think that is the general practice. But sometimes the reality is trying to create as many homes as possible. But, you know, that's the funding reality that that housing providers do face. But one of the ways we work really hard to promote integration and promote social connection through a range of social, social programmes. So for example, in Coffs Harbour, we have a Mission Australia Centre right next door to that forty-unit building where there's a range of, you know, community. where there's a range of um, you know, community activities and it's a hub for community services uh as well as uh social activities as well. So I think social connection uh is really important. Um, I do also add that in uh social housing in New South Wales, there is a program called the Tenant Participation and Community Engagement Program. And that's a program that works particularly where is a concentration of social housing, works with the tenants uh and the, and the local community to make sure there's good uh social, you know, social interaction um and social connectedness.
Commissioner Galbally, did you have any questions at the moment?
My question is, I, I don't quite know the word to use, but when, when something looks like it's working, you know, that you would see as successful, what's the mechanism then to lift it, to get it lifted up? Not by you particularly, but does, do you have an avenue to government? And are they quick to the table to say, this is great, now let's bring it right across Australia? Um, you know, cause otherwise successful models tend to come and go and um, you know, they go back at thirty decade, thirty years and it's, it's sort of feels like a loss of um really valuable information and evaluation too. So I just, um, you know, it's a bit of a um security's question, but i- is there a program to lift up successful models? And if not, should there be one? Maybe Trina, your, your organisation would.
Yep, um. Our sector is very good at undertaking evaluation and doing critical reflection on what works well and what does not work well. And there is regularly in-depth evaluation undertaken on successful program models. And examples are the Housing First approach, which, you know, was kind of broached in Australia. Some would say pre two thousand and ten, but really started to get traction around two thousand and ten. So we are now, you know, twenty twenty two and we still haven't got Housing First embedded into core business as a delivery model to end homelessness for vulnerable people. Despite the mountains of evidence, despite the international success and the evidence from people with lived experience, it's still funded as a stop-start program, often for up to two years and without good linkages to investment in new social housing. So that's just one example. And we could also give examples of the Common Ground Model, which is an integrated support housing option where people with complex needs who would not thrive in individual social housing properties outside of a supported setting. Um, we haven't been able to get further traction on another common ground in Sydney and youth fires. Another example that can significantly break the cycle of disadvantage. Um, we continue to advocate for them, but unfortunately have not got the traction to scale the development of them across New South Wales or Australia.
Yes, the terms to scale, isn't it?
Yes.
And the, the sort of frustration you must feel about that not happening. I mean, my second question was just, um, is the, are developments like the Coffs Harbour um forty unit development and others, are they, are they com- completely accessible to every type of disability?
Uh, I, I believe that, that it is accessible. Um, there's lift access uh in terms of access into the rooms, but I couldn't tell you how many of those units internally are accessible. I'm happy to take that question on notice if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd be really interested to know about the full accessibility of, of most of that, that stock, you know, of all of that stock.
Hmm.
Trina, before proceeding to the last topic, and I think some of that is probably, we can read into the evidence each of you have given, is there anything you wanted to add in terms of the best practice models?
I think I'd just like to add on early intervention and prevention. Um, you know, the evidence is clear who's at risk of homelessness. Among those in the highest risk categories are people with disability. And we know that having a disability can be both a cause of homelessness, you know, given the barriers we discussed today, and also a consequence of homelessness, given the trauma that homelessness can have and the concurrent mental health issues that can then eventuate. The best way to intervene in preventing people from becoming homeless in the first place involves ensuring that they can afford to access appropriate housing. So programs like the National Rental Affordability Scheme and Commonwealth Rental Assistance Programs, they're, they are a lifeline for vulnerable renters. And without those programs, many people with disability would fall into homelessness. The National Rental Affordability Scheme will finish in twenty twenty six, leaving thousands vulnerable to homelessness across Australia. And the risk factors are particularly high for people with disability. We also know that improving exit planning and accountability from government services like hospitals, out-of-home care, corrections are critical intervention points to reduce the risk of homelessness among people with disability. And we know that we're not adequately collecting data and tracking and coordinating across government to ensure that people are not exiting into homelessness. So we need shared accountability. The leading reason cited for seeking assistance for homelessness services for people with disability was housing crisis, domestic and family violence, and need for financial assistance. Poverty is the major driver of homelessness and programs to raise the minimum standard of living for people dependent on government support payments has demonstrated value to improve social and health outcomes. So rate, you know, we support campaigns like Raise the Rate and improving the standard of living for the most vulnerable.
Do you think the, an early intervention and prevention strategy and or model is used enough across New South Wales or is it still a crisis-driven model?
I think we're absolutely a crisis-driven model. There's steps that can be taken today. One example is, you know, abolishing the no grounds eviction clauses for renters and improving security for people who rent. Extending the National Rental Affordability Scheme so that thousands don't fall into um homelessness and investing in social and affordable housing so that if they can't access the private rental market, there is a safety net available, available for people that is funded and supported.
Last topic, um, and um again, I remind us all to try and slow down. Um. Can I start with you, Nada? What, what's your vision for people with disability in New South Wales and housing or homelessness, hopefully not homelessness in twenty years' time and in terms of a framework in which that might be achieved, whether it's a human rights one or in combination with another framework or other frameworks?
Uh, I, I think we need to start with uh believing that homelessness is solvable uh and not accept that it is inevitable. Um, I think for too long, um, you know, we've accepted that uh homelessness is inevitable and that there will be people who are homeless. So we need to start by, as a, as a system, as um, you know, uh organisations, uh government, non-government organisations, working together to accept that it is solvable. Uh, Mission Australia, we do believe that. One of our core strategies is ending homelessness. Uh, and uh, and uh we work, we on collaborations like the End Street Sleeping Collaboration, like the Constellation Project, that are looking at innovative ways to end homelessness. I think that's a really important start. We need to tackle the problem from different angles. It is not a one-size-fits-all. Homelessness services alone can't, can't solve the problem, disability service system can't solve the problem. The health system can't solve the problem, the housing system. So we need to work together. So there's that, uh, a, a connected system is really important. Um, we know what works, so we, we talked a lot about models today and the evidence of the programs that work. So there is a lot of evidence about what works. We just need to, to do it and we need the funding to make it happen. As um, you know, my, my colleague, um, my col- both my colleagues talked about today, a key is having enough social housing. Um, uh, you know, there's probably no need to say anymore about that. I, I guess we are not going to be able to end homelessness without having enough housing that is affordable, that is accessible and that is in the right locations, but also that help people achieve that social connection uh uh as well. Um, housing, I would, I, you know, vision is that seeing housing first as the go-to model uh before we even put people into crisis accommodation, that there actually needs to be the first response is a housing first response with wraparound support. Um, I, I want to see a system where there is no exits into homelessness. Um, I know Trina talked a little bit about this before. Um, it, you know, whether it's in the correction system, uh health system, other systems, let's plan to prevent people from exiting straight into homelessness. We know young people uh who are in out-of-home care, um about a third of young people in homelessness services have had an experience with out-of-home care. Let's, let's make sure we're not exiting people from out-of-home care into homelessness. Um, and that's been done in the, um, in other states. They have extended out-of-home care support to young people to the age of twenty one. We should be doing that in New South Wales as well. Um, it, it, a more, a stronger focus on prevention, early intervention. We heard uh Nick's story earlier today. Um, the risks were really early there that she was going to lose her tenancy. Uh, we need to be doing more for people like that to make sure we are identifying that they are at risk of homelessness and, and solving and, and helping them to stay housed uh before they become evicted. Um, uh, we talked a lot about a connected system that is a real, that's a key. Uh, it's really important that we have better systems for sharing information, for working together. And we don't need more programs, we need more uh client-centred approaches. Let's listen to um uh people with lived experience like Nick, like Christmas, that they are telling us their stories, they're telling us what they need. Let's listen to them and let's drive solutions that are focused on their needs rather than programs that are rigid, that are inflexible and that uh people with a disability have to fit into rather than the other way around. Um. I think I might leave it there. That's, that's um, yeah, that, that's my vision.
Thank you, Nada. Shane?
Yeah, um, thanks, Nada. I support everything you say. Um, I guess just to enhance a couple of those things. The, the question earlier around national collaboration and states and how does that work? Um, you know, we see health and housing sort of not really working together. Um, we've got the Commonwealth funding health programs through the primary health networks. Um, in the centrally Sydney uh primary health network, um they, as a Commonwealth department, formed a bit of a glue to bring three health districts, so the South East Sydney Local Health District, the Sydney Local Health District and the St Vincent's Health Network together with the Department of Communities and Justice to develop a um homelessness strategy across the board for that. It's a good example of, they have that Commonwealth view, they do get funding um for different initiatives to, to commission locally. And so maybe that's a good way forward as, as thinking about recommending some of the potentially they being the glue to bring agencies together because there's thirty one, I think, around the country. They're already established, they've been there for a while. Um, so that, that's one thing I'd add to better coordinated services. Um, I guess, um, uh regarding the um, the Housing First, I, I would love that that is the path, the course, but that means there is housing to put people in. Um, people are traumatised from moving from street to temporary accommodation, to crisis service, to somewhere else that they can go for two years, um, never knowing their, where their home will be. And every time they go through a cycle into a new type of accommodation, um, each time they have to learn new rules, new ways of working, new people. Um, and that's really difficult and very tiring. And that's actually one of the causes why a lot of people don't want to go into housing because I think that's where they will end up. Um, so it's having that, the, the, the foresight to hopefully, you know, lift the floor and you know, move away from um rough sleeping is where we accept. Um, people can start from to going, well, we need to move people into housing straight away, do it rapidly. Um, you reduce the trauma, you reduce the expense, um and you give people better life outcomes um by doing that.
Trina, can I ask you to finish, not, earning the time?
Yes, Homelessness New South Wales have a vision for a future where there's enough quality and safe housing and support services to ensure that no one is homeless in New South Wales. So we heard today and from the witnesses over the course of the inquiry of the commission that the drivers of homelessness are complex and varied. But I guess what I'm trying to explain is the solutions are the same. An investment in the supply of social and affordable housing and that needs to look like ten percent of all housing stock. So we need to get to a place where we have nation building so that all of the residential dwellings in Australia, about ten percent um are social housing and that's on par with similar countries that have similar GDP. We need to ensure that that housing is safe and designed for people with disability to live in safety and security with connection to their community. And that, that type of housing is designed for people to have connection with their family. In the instances of First Nations community members with disability, often um kin and families stay to ta- have caring responsibilities and housing needs to be designed to allow for that instead of in the current format that actually punishes tenants if they have family stay with them and puts them at risk of eviction. We need to fund services appropriately to meet the needs of clients and include specialist support, including psychosocial support and coordination to en- to access NDIS and other supports. And we need to coordinate across government to ensure that the safety net is knitted together tightly enough to ensure the most vulnerable in our community have access to the support they need in an accessible way without having to fight and advocate for a decent and safe standard of living.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I invite you with any final questions to the panel members.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll ask Commissioner Ryan first if he has any further questions for the panel. I might ask Trina a, a question. Um, you've described the level of it, you, you've described that we don't spend enough. And you've talked about the sort of expenditure that we, what you've talked about that we need to spend more. Um, the Royal Commission will ultimately have to address itself to how much. Um, is there an article you can refer to or a submission that's been given to the Royal Commission or to someone that has cal- that has suggested what the annual expenditure a government would have to make? Because the numbers are just phenomenal. I mean, there's a hundred and seventy eight thousand new houses built in Australia every year.
Yes.
Um, so um it would be, one imagine the number would be pretty staggering.
Yes, it's an investment in the future for Australia because we know that an investment in social and affordable housing has economic, social and health benefits. In terms of the funding for service delivery, if we take a.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Service delivery, the number of, you said you can't solve this.
Yeah, without housing. Yeah.
So exactly how many houses would a government have to build?
Yep.
Social housing in order to achieve that objective so that we're not meeting the objective in seventy years' time?
That's right.
What's a reasonable recommendation for this Royal Commission to make?
So the research is telling us in New South Wales that we need fifteen thousand houses per annum to meet the current and future need. That would represent about forty percent of all residential dwellings built in New South Wales, which is an enormous figure. Because of the atrophying nature and decline in social housing, that's where we are today. Modeling from um research from Ahuri, research from the Productivity Commission and some, and some modeling that we are working on at Homelessness New South Wales suggests that ten percent of all housing dwellings could significantly meet demand within the housing sector. And I'd be happy to submit a supplementary paper post today to give some modeling around that.
I'd be grateful. I think we would be grateful if you did that.
And I would also like to include some financial modeling to demonstrate why thirty six dollars a day is not enough to support people to exit homelessness in New South Wales. And we would need a further, at a conservative estimate, hundred and fifty two million dollars a year to meet the current demand in people accessing homelessness services.
By fifteen thousand uh social housing or houses, you mean not individual houses necessarily, but they could be units in buildings and so on.
Yes, that's right. That's right. I mean, it's important to note in New South Wales, approximately seventy thousand houses are approved, residential dwellings are approved every year. Only about thirty five thousand get built for various reasons. So that will give you an indication of um the current investment at two hundred to seven hundred houses built for social housing and where that sits at two percent of all housing built in New South Wales per year.
Did you have a response to, you might remember some time ago, we were talking, I think Commissioner Galbally referred to the um, uh, the standard of accessibility for housing. I understand there was some sort of uh regulation, reg- regulation impact statement done. Did housing in New South Wales? Did housing New South Wales contribute to that?
Um, given I've been at Homelessness New South Wales for eight weeks, I'm not sure if it was, was um submitted for that particularly. In previous roles, I have attended as a witness into the inquiry of follow-up of maintenance contracts of social housing in New South Wales and presented evidence to that parliamentary inquiry on the standards of public housing and the need for retrofitting of housing to meet accessibility and livable design guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. There you go. Um. Just a rough calculation, fifteen thousand total, let's say two hundred and fifty thousand a pop. What does that get you to? Something like twenty five billion dollars a year.
It's a significant investment required.
Yes.
The me- the methods can be mixed though. Not all investment needs to be from government. We can have mixed method investment. Some of the recommendations that Homelessness New South Wales are making includes planning reform to allow for what's called inclusionary zoning so that there is social and affordable housing developed on all new developments. A social housing levy applied to all developments to fund investment in social housing. We are also suggesting there could be modeling around the development of a social housing clearinghouse that could capitalize and work as a vehicle for private investment from superannuation and other investors in the development of social housing. And also that we have um subsidies in place from the state government to match investment from federal government to realize increased impact of federal investment at the state level.
As broad as our terms of reference may be, I'm not entirely sure that we're, we're instructed
Sure.
to develop economic policy over the next two decades for the entire country, but we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galbally, did you have tips?
Um, look, I just wanted to thank you very much and to thank you very much for that vision. Um, you know, it's really um very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to the Commission and giving evidence. And yes, we've had a, a number of very interesting ideas. Thank you. And they've learned a lot about the work that uh you are doing, which uh indeed is very helpful to uh our own work. So thank you very much for your contributions to the Commission. We very much appreciate. Um, Mr. Pogarty, it is now one o'clock. I take it we adjourn until two?
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.